All right, good evening, everybody. I've got six o'clock and we are live. Looks like we've got a slightly smaller crowd than normal. So, the President Andy Phelan is not here tonight. Right now, we're also missing Marshall Johnson, who may show up in a little bit. We're also going to be missing Clay tonight. But there are four of us, and that is a quorum. So, we won't waste anybody's time, and we'll just keep driving on if that's okay with everybody. A little bit of ground rules. When we get to the applicant for each issue, we will give the applicant five minutes to speak. If they need a little bit longer, we can provide that to them as well. And then we'll provide everybody three minutes to do a rebuttal if they would like. If you were going to repeat somebody else's rebuttal, and somebody's already said what you're going to say, you can go to the microphone, give your name and your ward number, and then just say, "I echo what so-and-so said," or "I echo what everybody else has said." That way, we can save on a little bit of time and kind of get everybody on the record, but not have to go through the same argument over and over again. At the end of that, we'll let the applicant come back up if they want to do a rebuttal. After that, we'll close it down. We'll discuss amongst the Planning Department, the Attorney, and the Commissioners. And then, once that's complete, we'll take our vote. So, that's going to be the ground rules. So, I'll call the meeting to order. I've got Michael, who's going to do a quick prayer, and Jennifer is going to do the pledge.
Father, thank you and praise you for everything tonight. I ask for your guidance and knowledge tonight for all of us tonight as we consider the information and documentation that's before us tonight. I ask that we hear from your citizens today, tonight, and understand and try to get a better feel for what needs or all the new developments presented to us tonight. Also asked that all of us get home safely tonight as we leave and close out our meeting at the end of the meeting. In your name, I pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the first item on the agenda is a pretty easy one, the approval of last month minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review? Does anybody want to make a motion to accept?
Is that your motion?
Minutes from the meeting. All right, motion from Michael, second from Nick. The minutes have been approved and entered into the record. Item number three, old business, there is no old business. Moving straight on to item number four, a new business. This is David and Alexandria Arnold, 145 Lafayette Circle, house number 61380024000. There's a request for a short-term rental permit.
I'll take it. Okay, no, I'm sorry. All right, sorry. All right, yeah, we're looking at 145 Lafayette Circle. Request is a permit to operate a short-term rental that allows rental usage for less than 30 consecutive days. The subject property is Zoned R2, which is low, medium-density residential. It's a single-family dwelling. This property would be number 53 out of 60 available short-term rental permits within the citywide zone for short-term rentals. The findings of the property, the local property manager would be Kenny Foreman, which would be residing within two miles of the city limits. The application was complete and submitted prior to the deadline. The property is not located in an HOA covenant restricted area. For as far as liability insurance, the signed application space liability insurance for the property does not exclude short-term rentals from the coverage. The inspection, so the property was inspected for all required elements on October 23rd, 2025, and was approved. The maximum occupancy for the property would be six, and the maximum number of vehicles would be three. And the guest rules were posted and visible during the property inspection, and there's no code violations received, and also no public feedback was received as of November 7th. Still have not received any public feedback as of today.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, have any questions for the Planning Department? All right, do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
Motion.
Motion, Nick? Second. Second, Michael. All right, we are now in a public hearing. Are David or Alexandria Arnold here? No?
I think the property manager, Kenny.
Or Kenny Foreman, are you here? Okay. If you'd like to speak, you don't have to if you don't want to.
You made me stand up.
Yeah, just name and award at the microphone.
Kenny Foreman, I'm the property manager, or proposed property manager for that unit. I live within city limits. I have other properties within town that I already manage. I'll be on call 24/7. Won't have any issues, but if there are, I'll be the one to address it.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else want to speak in favor of a short-term rental permit? Anybody want to speak against a short-term rental permit? Nothing heard? Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for a short-term rental.
We've got to go into public hearing first. Motion to close public hearing. All right, we've got Nick, and Michael was the second. All right, we are now out of public hearing. Jennifer, go ahead.
And I'll make a motion to approve a short-term rental permit located at 145 Lafayette Circle with an annual renewal and compliance in City Ocean Springs with SDR ordinance.
All right, motion, do I have a second? Nick, second? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it? All right, moving on to 4B.
I just want to know that it will be on the consent agenda for November 18th for the BOA.
Thank you very much, yeah. So, that will also be on the consent agenda for the BOA meeting for final approval on December 8th.
No, November 18th.
November 18th, thank you. Write that down so I don't forget. Say it again.
If not, I have it written down for you, too.
Thanks. All right, so we are Gregory Williams, 614 Clark Avenue, PID number 6015701000, requesting approval of a short-term rental permit. Go ahead.
This property is Zoned RD, two-family residential. It's a single-family dwelling. This property would make permit numbers 54 out of 60 available permits in the citywide zone for short-term rentals. The local property manager for this property would be Chris Dearman, who is located within two miles of the city limits. The application was complete and submitted prior to the deadline. This property is not located in a HOA subdivision. The signed application does state the liability insurance for the property does not exclude short-term rentals from coverage. As far as the inspection goes, the inspection took place on October 22nd, 2025. As far as the maximum occupancy, the requested maximum occupancy was six. However, there was not a bed in the third bedroom, so four is the maximum occupancy that was approved by the Fire Marshal during the inspection. And the maximum number of vehicles, the request was for four. However, three vehicles were approved during the building official during the inspection. The guest rules were posted and visible during the property inspection, and no code violations were received, and no public feedback was received in our office here. I simply have to board.
Thank you. Commissioners, have any questions? Motion to go to public hearing?
I do have a question. Should I wait till... It might be for the manager, I guess, but make sure we change the, or update the rules in the building.
Yes, correct. Yeah, the rules did state for the maximum occupancy, a number of vehicles would need to be updated. The application was submitted before the inspection happened, so if he got approval, we were going to request him to change, update the rules prior to renting the unit out.
Thank you. Motion to go into public hearing?
Motion.
Nick, second?
Second.
Jennifer? All right, we are now in a public hearing. Gregory Williams or Chris Dearman, are you here? Would you like to speak?
I'm typically here representing Greg.
Do you want to speak? You don't have to if you don't want to.
I have a question on the occupancy, if that's all right?
Sure.
So, we've got a long-term tenant there right now. We did intensive renovations, we put a tenant there.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Can you go to the microphone and state your name and your ward, please?
Jeff Liam. I believe that's Ward 2, Clark. So, we've got a long-term tenant there. Long-term being their lease is up in a couple months. We want to go ahead and, you know, get our short-term rental thing set out. The reason why we don't have the beds in the last bedroom is they're living there right now, they're soon to leave, and we didn't want, you know, they've got an office set up. Could we go back and reapply for a six-person permit afterwards, or do we have to wait a full annual year for that?
I would say annual year, because this is what you're approving is what they got.
Yeah, and that's going to be it. So, the Board of Aldermen, when they, if they approve this, that's going to be it for the year, but yes, when your year is up, you can reapply, and you reapply, you can do that.
Well, thank you, that's it.
Does anybody else want to speak in favor of the short-term rental permit? Anybody opposed want to speak? Oh, y'all talking a bunch. All right. Motion to close public hearing.
Motion. Motion closed.
Second.
All right, got a motion by Nick and a second by Jennifer. We are now out of public hearing. Commissioners, anything further? Anybody want to make a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion. Going to follow suit of the, on the agenda, but to recommend approval of a short-term rental permit located at... Recommend approval of a short-term rental located at 614 Clark Avenue with an annual renewal and compliance with the City of Ocean Springs... What is that, SDR standards?
Short-term rental.
Short-term rental ordinance?
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nick, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to item number four, C, public hearing.
Kevin, Amy would like to call in.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Don't forget her, post it, no.
One more question.
BOA, is it going to go on?
Yeah, oh, sorry, yes, 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 yes. That will... All right, so item number 4B, that's 614 Clark Avenue, that will be heard at the Board of Alderman meeting on November 18th for final approval. If y'all just bear with us for a second, we're going to try to get another Commissioner So, while we're doing that, before we get into the next agenda item, I would like to state that this is a sketch plat that is coming to us for approval. This is, they do not have the engineers, sewer, water, drainage, all that stuff is not complete by the city yet. That comes back to us on the second round when we do a preliminary plat. And then, once that's complete and approved, it comes back for another round for a final plat approval. All three of those have to be approved by the Board of Aldermen before anything, any construction happens or anything else moves forward. So, we're going to have three meetings on this topic. This first one is just, is this a good idea? And then, after we get past that, then we'll start talking about, can the sewer handle it? Can the water handle it? What are the engineer drawings? We'll get into all those details as we move through this process. Today's meeting is just about, is this right for the city? Does it meet all the codes? Does it meet all the UDC requirements? Have they done everything they need to do to get to this point? So, just keep that in mind, let's not, try not to get dragged down into details about sidewalk whiffs or, you know, percentage of land. Those things will come as this progresses. Andy, we got you?
Trying. Hey, it's Andy.
Hey, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can. Yeah, and I just pulled the thing up on my phone, so I got my agenda and everything.
Okay.
All right, Andy, good to have you.
All right, where are we at?
All right, we are starting with item 4C, the public hearing for southeastern construction remodeling, Pats Road, PID 60127170, requesting sketch plat approval for 123 lot town home subdivision, to be called Holly Grove for reference. And we've got Mickey L. Robertson. We have Mickey presenting today?
Mickey?
Yeah, come on up, guys. All right, so, do you guys want to give your preliminary?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we're going to have the Planning Department speak first, then we'll do a public hearing, and then we'll go to you guys.
I'll go through our staff report.
Thank you.
So, our staff report is the subject property is currently Zoned R1A, which is a special apartment use district. The description of the request tonight is requesting approval for sketch plat of 123 lot subdivision or town home dwellings on proposed private streets named Holy Grove Subdivision. We have a combination of five-plex and six-plex town home buildings. The sketch plat indicates the property size is 19.46 acres with a density of 6.32 lots per acre. Applicants proposing five-foot sidewalks, as illustrated with the development along Pats Road as well. A 20-foot buffer is provided along the adjoining properties to the south and west, and an 18-foot buffer is provided along Pats Road containing a meandering five-foot sidewalk. 21.2% green space provided with the minimum requirement in the R1A being 5%. A 1.17-acre pond with at least 20-foot wide walkable uplands surrounding the water. Proposed amenities, as shown on the sketch plat, include a clubhouse, pool, and pickleball courts. The developers also proposing to construct a pump station to be located on site. Some findings of the property, the property was actually rezoned from R1 to R1A at the June 16th, 1987 Board of Alderman meeting. The approval of the sketch plat constitutes an approval of the type, intensity of development, and project facing plan. There is no proposed additional phases of this project. A neighborhood meeting was held on August 26th, 2025 by the developer at the Ocean Springs Community Center. Approximately 45 residents were in attendance, and the project was presented with a question and answer session. The meeting notes and sign-in sheets are included in your packet. As mentioned before, the property is currently Zoned R1A, Special Use Apartment District. This is the most restrictive apartment district to provide for luxury townhomes or apartment development in selected areas of Ocean Springs. The area height and setback regulations are as follows. The front yard setback is 25 foot, the side yard setback is 10 foot, rear yard setback is 25 foot, and the height is four stories or 50 foot. And the lot area per family, so in the R1A for this type of development, for the five-plex buildings, each property for the five-plex building would be required to have 23,000 square feet of property. A six-plex building would be required to have 25,000 square foot of property. The development was sent out to each department for comments. Initially, the plan that came to us a couple of months ago did include 146 town home units. It has since decreased down to 123, partly because some of the comments that were received, block size setbacks, but the plan was amended. The public works comments that are still out there is the water department required a full set of plans, but typically that would come, as Kevin mentioned, at preliminary plat. Couple of notes that all tabs will be made by the developer. The sewer department, they're requesting a sewer study to be conducted. However, the developer is proposing to put a pump station on property. And the drainage department, they're requesting a drainage study down Government Street and Pats Road. Again, that would be handled at the preliminary plat stage if it gets approved through sketch plat. Fire department, all comments have been addressed now since there are fire turnarounds supplied on the layout. And the engineering comments, the all comments have been addressed on this revised sketch plat that has been received. And just an additional comment that came from the engineering was to recommend to obtain an AJD from the Army Corps of Engineers. Also, it was requested that they conduct a traffic study, a traffic impact studying. So, Government Road and Pats Road out to Ocean Springs was studied, and Neil Schaefer was the one who did the traffic study that has come back. What the conclusion of the traffic study was, that a left turn lane is warranted on Government Street at the Holy Grove entrance. The final report is also attached in part of the packet. When this agenda was posted on Friday afternoon, at that point, I had the 18 opposition letters received. Since then, I have received additional opposition letters that include one letter that had 55 signatures on there, and additional 12 more letters have been received. Those are in part of your packet, so it'll be on the front cover. There's a stack of letters that we have received since Friday.
Can I get a motion to include these in the minutes?
Motion to include.
Got a motion by Nick, second?
Second.
So, what we're doing is everything that arrived after this was published, we are now entering all those letters into the minutes so that they will be public record.
And that concludes the backboard.
All right, thank you very much. I do have a question about the left turn lane. Has the city determined whether that's feasible or not yet?
Basically, the, that would probably be done at preliminary plat, so the engineering portion would come into it, and that's whenever the civil plans would show right-of-way, how much right-of-way there is, if there's enough, and then that would be part of preliminary plat.
Okay, but we don't have an initial ideal whether that's going to be possible or not? Okay, thank you.
Is that left turn off of government or coming out?
Off of government. Off of government going in.
I've got a couple of questions, too, whenever I can hear if anybody else is speaking.
Go ahead, Andy.
All right, the only two I had, Amanda, you said something about they were requesting an AJD from the Corps of Engineers. Would that be a preliminary plat item as well?
Yes, I mean, the, our office, the UDC does not require us to have a letter from Army Corps of Engineers. That is a separate entity, so that would be pretty much between the developer and Army Corps of Engineers.
I know, yeah, I get that. I'm just saying, from a procedural standpoint, that's more of a final, or I'm sorry, a preliminary plat issue, like a design level issue.
Yeah, it was more recommended and not required from our office, is we don't have the jurisdiction over wetlands. It was just a recommendation.
My other question is, I think me and you were speaking at one point about, like, a couple of the lot sizes were not quite there, but from what I can tell, it appears that those have all been addressed, the 25,000 and the 26?
Yes.
Does all that math, all that math work?
Yes.
All right, okay, I thought I just wanted to confirm.
Yes, yes, thank you. Before, they did not meet, but yes, the plat that's submitted in the packet today does meet all the requirements, 23,000 at least for five-plex, and 25,000 for the six-plex buildings. That has been addressed.
All right, perfect, yeah, I thought so, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, thank you.
But that's all I had, Kevin, until we hear everybody else.
Okay. Any other Commissioners have questions? Jennifer, Michael, any questions?
I don't know if it...
You can ask them later.
Okay, I wanted to address the open space. So, in the documents, it talks about 5% for kind of apartment-type rules there, but later on in the UDC, there's a mention in Section 418, it talks about the rules or guide, the rules, actually.
Green space?
Yeah, green space, but what do we call it? RA, R1A is a requirement of 20% open space. I know in your document, the sketch plat, it has 21 odd percent for open space, but there are other guidelines in that Section 418 where it says you can only use like 25% of a retention pond, and you, building footprints are not applicable. I think the current sketch plat has, is using some of the, some of like the different housing type units as open space, so. Parking is not allowed either, parking spaces in there, so. I just wanted to make sure, at least if not now, preliminary plat would verify that the requirements of Section 418 for open space are met according to our rules, you know, which is more than just 20%. It also applies to, you can only have a certain amount of a retention pond, you can't use building footprints, you can't have, parking areas are not applicable, so. Just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other comments from planning, Amanda?
No, sir.
All right. I get a motion to go into public hearing.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Got a motion from Nick, second?
Second.
Second from Jennifer. All right, we are now in a public hearing. The applicant, please state their name and, let's do city and state.
My name is Ross Bruce. Good evening, Commissioner. Thanks for the opportunity. My city and state is Baton Rouge, Louisiana. I like to take an opportunity, I'll do my best not to repeat, Amanda threw out a lot of facts about our proposed projects, so in the sake of, for the sake of time, I'll do my best not to repeat what she said, but there are a couple of important points, I think, we need to hit upon again. The subject property is Zoned R1A, Special Apartment Use. The zoning, the zoning allows for approximately 240 traditional apartment units, up to four stories high. But what we're proposing, we believe, is more in line with the neighborhoods around us, meaning one- and two-story homes with garages and backyards. We're proposing a community of 123 townhomes. I would like to point out, this is 17% less than our original submittal of 146, and nearly 50% less dense than what the zoning allows for. Community amenities, including a clubhouse, resort-style pool, fitness center, pickleball courts, and 4.12 acres of green space are 21%, as Commissioner pointed out. This is according to staff, your staff, planning staff, this is four times the minimum requirement. The neighborhood will have an on-site property manager and a maintenance team. I think this is also an important point, and I'll touch on that a little bit later. It will also be private and gated, meaning that we will retain ownership and maintenance of all roads, sidewalks, pond, and mostly improvements, likely the only exception being the sewer lift station. Five-foot sidewalks will be built throughout. The property is not in a flood zone. There are no jurisdictional wetlands on the property. A few words about drainage. Although a drainage impact study is not required until construction plans, preliminary plat stage, as Amanda pointed out, we've completed some preliminary analysis on the site. One-third of property currently drains south, or two-thirds currently go north. Our drainage system will be designed to reduce the post-development 25-year storm event runoff to the existing pre-development 25-year storm event runoff per city ordinance. I think that's an important point for everyone to understand. Per the ordinance, we are not allowed to create excess runoff in any facet of what it is currently. Traffic, we understand that's a big touching point here. Although traffic study is not required, there was a request about city officials that we obtained. The scope of the study was approved by the city. We did not determine the scope. We hired Neil Schaefer to complete the study, affirming that the city itself has hired in the past. Here are the main takeaways from the study. The study is very thick and rather complicated, to be honest with you, I'm not a traffic engineer, but the study intersections are anticipated, here's the summary directly quoting from page 4-9 of the traffic study. The study intersections are anticipated to operate at acceptable levels of service after the proposed development is complete. Paragraph 5.2 in conclusions says, "The development of 123 townhomes is not anticipated to create major capacity-related deficiencies at the study intersection." A left-hand turn lane is warranted on Government Street. A left-hand turn lane is warranted on Government Street at Holly Grove Road." I think we already entered the traffic study into the records.
Yes. Yeah, so if anybody wants to read the traffic study, it is in the packet that is posted on the city website. Entire traffic study, the wetland study and everything else is all in that packet if you'd like to read it.
So a few facts, I want to touch on this, Amanda didn't touch on this, and I think it's important. A few facts about the homes themselves and our residences, our residents are going to live there. I've read the opposition letters and there's clearly some misunderstanding out there about who's going to live here. The homes will range from 1,100 to 1,400 square feet. They will be two and three-bedroom units. Each home will have a garage and a backyard, as I've said. Rental rates will start out at 1,850 a month for a two-bedroom and 2,050 a month for a three-bedroom. We actually are expecting higher rental rates, but these are conservative initial lease-up projections. So criteria for living in our community. To qualify for a lease, you must bring in three times a monthly rent to income ratio, meaning residents must have house of income of 66,000 to 73,000 minimum to qualify, to even qualify for, to be considered for a lease. We do a credit check, 650 minimum credit score, we do a background track, and no month-to-month or short-term leases, only 10, 12, 14-month leases. So to clarify, this is not a low-income housing development. We don't have any issues or opposition to low-income housing, it's just not what we do. Another important point I'd like to make, this is, I think, one of the important differences of what we're proposing versus what the zoning allows and what someone else may come here to this body and to the next public meeting at the Alderman, Board of Alderman meetings, someone else may be presenting something different, but here's what we're proposing, and this is important, I think. The community will consist of individually planted lots, which means that each home can be sold separately to individuals or families. So what, I'm not saying that we're going to sell the homes individually, we're going to invest about 30 million in this project. It's more valuable to us to retain all ownership and maintenance and management of the property and operate it as a business. But what this does mean is that in the future, you do not have an apartment building that is not, is only controlled by one person. In the future, this community could be owned by 123 individual families. I think it's important for everyone to understand, in R1A zoning, in apartment zoning, that's pretty rare. That's, you know, that's not normally the case. So I'll wrap up. The planning commission report dated November 12 confirms our property's own is R1A and that our proposed development, and importantly, the sketch plat before you this evening meets all criteria as laid out by the city in its code and ordinance. In short, we meet all technical and legal standards. Since this property is zoned R1A and the fact that we're not asking for any variances, which is why it took us several months and I think one deferral to get this right, it's important that we get this right, it's important that we not come in before you with any variances. We meet all criteria set forth by the city and we believe our proposed project is used by right and should be approved. We ask for your support and recommendation for approval to the Board of Alderman. We look forward to working with everyone to make Holly Grove a successful project in the Ocean Springs community. Thank you.
Hey Amanda, I have one question I wanted to ask if he hasn't sat down.
Okay, he's still up there.
All right, yeah, I heard him say that, you know, long-term leases, I don't remember the exact ones, but he said no short-term, does that mean no short-term rentals? And kind of a background, or another one, if they had somebody renting it, but they allow somebody renting the apartment to do short-term rentals? I'm talking VRBO style, short-term rentals.
Yes, yes, sir. That's a great question, I should have said that. So we do not allow our residents to sublease. So whoever is, who signs the lease, it's going to be, we range, we try and stagger so 10, 12, or 14-month leases, but no one can rent it out nightly, monthly, and by way of sublease. No, sir.
Anybody else have questions? No questions? All right, would anybody else like to speak in favor of the sketch plat approval? All right. Anyone opposed to the sketch plat approval? I'm just going to start left to right, so let's go left to right. Come up to the mic, name and ward. Give you three minutes to speak, please keep it as brief as you can and stick to the points that are relevant. Thank you.
On that road, Simbord 5, I live in the entranceway of Magnolia Bayou off Government Street, and everybody in here, including yourselves and your police department, your bus drivers, school bus drivers, and everybody knows, that intersection, that Nap Road and Government Street is a freaking mess today. Before, you would implement putting a turn-in lane in for an apartment complex, I should go off down there and fix that area around that little elementary school, because it backs up for miles both ways. And traffic study, I'll look at it, I'll go home and look at it, I guarantee you, it's probably a little bit of, run across that counter, doesn't indicate the amount of impact that I see or anybody else sees on that road, on that street, okay? So with that plat that was provided at the public hearing, that entranceway and Pats Road was on there, I thought was on the other end, but I might be reading that wrong, either Police force, and Rob's obviously not here, this is planning meeting, not an Alderman meeting, but I spoke with Rob Blackman on numerous occasions about potential ideas to control the traffic at that intersection. You take your life in your hands, if you go across, you have to take a left or a right, you know what I'm saying? Because of everything. And school down there, you go in one way and the traffic comes from the east or the west, and whenever somebody won't let nobody turn left in there, like I said, they'll back all the way up to, shoot, I don't remember, Gulf Park State's almost, okay? So it's serious, and we really got a taste of it when we closed the bridge on, okay? So, he being a homeowner in Magnolia Bayou, we don't want to be to cut through for the community, because ain't nobody going to stay in line for the school traffic, they going to cut through our neighborhood, hit Pats Road, go down the turn-in there, okay? And right now, because that traffic's so bad, there are people that's doing that today, and that's probably, I'm going to guess, without trying to be an old fogey, is probably some high schoolers or something. If they come through that entrance right there, where I live, on two wheels, there's a stop sign there that nobody stops at, and that's why I've asked Rob, you know, stationed some police there now and then, and they'll come for a day or two, an hour or two, not even in the prime time, but they'd make an effort, okay? But they're on two wheels, because if you're taking a cut-through, you don't want to be at the same time coming down the other end as you did if you just standing there, okay? So they're hauling ass through there, our speed limit's 25 miles an hour, and I bet you a hundred dollars that they're doing twice that, okay? I don't have any little kids anymore, but I got dogs and I've got other neighbors in the area, I've got kids, I've got grandkids, and I'm fixing to clear them. But really, you know, I'm all about growth, and I know that housing is an issue across the entire country. But Ocean Springs wants to get big and wants to annex out, and that's great, okay? I understand growth. But if I can't take care of people that's already been here for 30 years, okay? Do something with that road, do something right there in that intersection.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, buddy.
All right, over on the left side.
So any way you can increase the volume on that plaque?
I got one more thing, one more thing.
I'm pretty sure somebody else is going to say the same thing that you're going to say.
And then maybe, you know, a little healthy damn river.
Okay.
They talked about putting a gate. Magnolia Bayou's Boulevard Public Street, right? Isn't it? I think it is, okay? Because y'all fixed pieces of concrete. It is. Let's put us a gate up there. Let's lock them out.
All right, over on the left side, anybody else want to speak? That wants to say something new? Come on up. Name and ward at the microphone, please.
Robert Tillman, Ward 5. First thing I want to talk about is the value of our property in that area, I'm in Magnolia Bayou on most of these guys. And yeah, they got a high, high-value property there, but when you're driving by it, you're not going to know that. You're just going to see a bunch of homes there, high-density homes, and then you're going to go in, and you're going to come into our neighborhood, and how that could affect our, so. Unless proposed for our buyers, these new buyers know that that's a high-income development, I think it's going to negatively affect our property then. The second item is that of traffic. That gentleman talked about the south entrance, I'm going to talk about the north entrance. Their traffic study calls for 813 trips a day coming out of that neighborhood.
Wow.
Okay, that's their traffic study. Their study shows that half of those will go up Pats Road, and the other half will go up to Holly Grove Government Entrance. That gives us 406 cars on Pats Road trying to get out to Government. They already got 253 cars in their traffic study, car leaving Pats Road. So you've more than doubled the traffic on Pats Road trying to get out to Government. That intersection needs to be changed. You can't support that kind of traffic. Their AM, PM peak period studies don't show dramatic increases like that, because it's already peaked. But when you start looking at the daily traffic, it's a huge increase. And like he says, a lot of that traffic goes right by my house.
Thank you, Robert.
And then the infrastructure, but I guess that'll come in later. Thank you.
Tristan Armour, Ward 5. A couple of things, I'm going to, I guess, pick some nits with the sketch plat, this is what we're here to do. One of the big issues when I got prepared to look at this today, the turn-in off of Government, it was a small little parcel purchased kind of anticipation of this. I looked at the deed, I've got it with me, I kind of highlighted it. It does not accurately describe that section of property. As we sit in this room today, the record owner of that turn-in, it was misdescribed, that's got to be fixed to apply for any subdivision, you have to be the fee owner, you don't have to take my word for it, heck, I'll even leave your lawyer a highlighted copy, it's simply that the description of the deed, their own survey starts them at the southernmost section section concrete marker and then runs south. Well, that puts you down there in the park or the bayou. What they meant to do is start at the northern concrete marker and run down 1,300 feet to the point beginning. So the deed that they have for their turn-in today does not accurately describe the property. That's a problem that needs to be fixed before we move forward. If you look at the 19-acre quickclaim deed, it starts at the southernmost marker, but it runs up 2,900 feet and goes north. The deed to, again, their entrance, starts at the northern, excuse me, southern marker and runs south. It just doesn't work, so please fix that before we move forward. Picking some more nits with this sketch plat, I've never seen a plat that allowed those two little turnarounds in the northwest and southeast corner, okay? Our UDC calls for cul-de-sacs in those areas. Now, the reason they didn't put cul-de-sacs is because they wanted to jam more units in there. But I've never seen that as a turnaround. Our UDC does not allow dead-end streets unless you own the property contiguous to it and plan to do further development. Those were dead-end streets until they made this little back corner turnaround thing, I guess to satisfy the fact that a fire truck cannot get in and out of there. It should be a cul-de-sac, it should be made to redesign that sketch plat, use the property for a cul-de-sac like everybody else complaining with UDC has to do, and they did not. The bigger issue I've got on the east side, that is the park. They have not put or designed any buffer between it and the park. The park is a conservation area, your UDC doesn't define it any broader than that, but we all know what the National Park Service is. And I'd also say this, I looked at the court, excuse me, the public file, I did not see any signing off by the National Park Service superintendent that this subdivision was okay with them. That's something that the National Park Service has as a policy. We probably need to get a hold of them too if we're going to do this right and not have to take 10 steps backwards. But that is a transition, this is R1, all around it. If you look at the zoning map, this R1A, it's a legacy from what, '84, '78, whatever the ancient era was. And what you've got now is this tiny little R1A in the middle of RR, then you go across the tracks and it becomes commercial. It is literally spot zoning in reverse, all right? And that's why they're trying to cram in as many units as they can in R1A. R1A is not to cram as many units in. R1A is supposed to be luxury townhomes. There's nothing about this that is luxury. This is max money to the developer. Every unit they can stick in this place, they've stuck in this place. The streets on this sketch plat, they don't comply with UDC either. Supposed to be 60-foot right-of-way, supposed to have the five-foot sidewalk, supposed to have the trees, supposed to have nine-foot parking, you can look in your own UDC. They stuck in, again, a 36-foot right-of-way, not for luxury, but to jam as many units as they can in this piece of property. So again, if we're picking nits at the sketch plat, it's got some fundamental flaws that really ought to be cured of before we go forward on preliminary plat. Remember, East Ocean Springs, and we'll finish with this a number of times about it, in our comprehensive plan for the city, East Ocean Springs, the predominant use is single-family residence. The remaining vacant land in the district does not provide, excuse me, does provide the city one of its last opportunities within its corporate boundaries to reclaim character and prevent further loss of natural resources that provide much of the character of Ocean Springs. Does this go with the planning character of an entirely R1 area? Heck no, it's not in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan says this, we want it to protect against the loss of ocean.
Can I maybe wrap it up, please?
Two more. Loss of community character?
Quickly, please.
All right, I'll wrap it up. Simply to say, if you look at comprehensive plan, this doesn't mean.
Thank you, Tristan. All right, so moving left to right, who's next? Come on up, sir.
Ricky Matisse, Magnolia Bayou, 3501 Sandpiper Court. I'm against this project, and the only other thing I got to say, Tristan, ditto.
Thank you, Ricky. Anybody want to move on?
Wyatt Davis, I'm zoned 4, Ward 4. I'd like to say that it all sounds like it might be something good at this time, but then he turned around and said that these units could be sold eventually, 123 units, okay, Billy Bob buys the unit, rents it to his crackhead brother, whatever. This could be a disaster in the making if all these things end up being sold, if they decide, we don't want this property anymore, we want to get out of Ocean Springs, we want to retire, we don't want to deal with this anymore, and this becomes a complete disaster right next to all these beautiful homes and neighborhoods around it. That's it.
Thank you, Wyatt. All right, continuing on. Anybody else something to add? Come on up.
My name is Norma Harrington. I live at 13 Satell Road, which is off of Pats Road, Ward 5. And I don't want to repeat myself, but I do have two things I want to bring up about the dispute of the traffic study. It doesn't really bring into focus that there's really only four car lengths between Ocean Springs Road, Light, and Pats, and we are dependent on people letting us out most of the time. And the second thing I want to bring up is that in the study, they said that Pats Road has a dirt shoulder. There's no shoulders in, so I want to bring that up too, and everything else that other people said, I agree with on that. And as far as selling the property later on possibly, what about the covenants for that property? I really think that's important, because if they're going to sell it, it should all be sold off, and then we should have covenants that protect the rest of the residents of Ocean Springs. That's all I have.
Thank you, Nora. All right, getting toward the end. Anybody in the right seats? All right, come on up. Name and ward at the microphone, please.
Hello, I'm Kate.
Hello, I'm Kate Mendoza. I live in Ward 4. I live on Government Street, and I live directly in front of the Woodhaven District, so I'm right there between Magnolia and Pabst. I appreciate what we've heard from Magnolia residents right now, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about what's going on in front of our streets. We have so much back up. Every time there's a train that comes through, which, how many times a day does the train come through, y'all? We know Amtrak comes twice a day. When, and that intersection in front of our house is, which needs to be around about, y'all, we need to let the Pabst people in. So we need to figure out something to do with that intersection. There are six subdivisions between Magnolia Park and that intersection. And so each of those subdivisions has dozens or hundreds of homes and thousands of residents between Magnolia Park and the Ocean Springs Road subdivision. Kids are walking to and from, going to school at Magnolia Park. It's not, it's a terrible idea to add another subdivision with 123 homes. The last meeting at the community center, I'm not going to say much, but the last meeting at the community center, you said, and I'm paraphrasing here, you said, "Something will be built there, and next time it's going to be another low-income apartment complex." It could, you know, it could be, which I don't appreciate, but, um, if that's true, what are you adding to our neighborhood? Were this fitness center, the pickleball courts, are they going to be open to our neighborhood? Are they going to be for public use? If they're not, then I don't see what you're adding. You're going to threaten us like that. You know, Brooms gives us a really good walkable grocery store. Give us something that we'll add to the neighborhood, okay? All right. That's all I really have to say.
One more hand. Come on up, sir.
Hi, I'm Mark Pugh. I'm a start-by you in Ward 4. And I'm here basically to, like they said, except I want to talk about the wetlands, because that's what I did for 40 years, was studying the environment. And I don't know if you can put the figure six up, possibly. Taking my time. Lot of stuff to go through. Anyway, it's this one here. Or here's the bay head.
That's toward the beginning of the packet.
Yeah. Anyway, whenever we look at it, it's this one here. If you look where the bay head is, it's over near the Park Service Road. And one of the arguments they make is that based on a March 2025 EPA ruling that it has to be contiguous and connected to a actual drainage, an actual river, creek, whatever. And the problem is, that's just very recent. Before that, and they say this in the document, at least in the wetlands document, that by legal standard, they are wetlands, the bayheads and the pines, uh, wetlands. And they say it's 1,780 feet to the first, um, source of direct water. And the problem is, that's a third of a mile. That's not very far. And they say there's three little humps in between that are barriers to the water flowing down. Any of these folks been here when we've had a hurricane? That water is going to flow, unless they can tell you what the elevation difference is from the average elevation, it's ridiculous. Beyond the fact that if you look where they have, yeah, that's it. It's up in the right-hand, sort of right-hand corner. That's, yeah. And if you look at number seven, be another good one. There's no question in my mind, from knowing how, keep going, keep going. Water flows, that DP4 is where the bay head is. Bayheads are the top of creeks and bayous and things like that. Those you fill in all the time, which is quite frankly insane. But if you have a next slide, can you please? That circle down at the bottom is the closest, what they call, what's the federal term? Relatively permanent water. And what the, what the new law says in March, given the current EPA, it has to be connected permanently. I know. And the fact is, if you had high water there, guarantee it's going to be connected. And then you've got all the water this way over by the park, and that's probably shorter than a third of a while. So I'd be worried about, envision all the other important things people have said, the wetlands. And Ocean Springs is built around all kinds of wetlands. And continuously bury bayheads and things like that is a shame. It's a real shame. So that's all I got to say.
All right, looks like we got two more. Name and award at the microphone, please.
My name is Redding Norton. I live in Magnolia Valley, Ward 5. Thank you for taking my time, taking the time to listen to me. So I'm not going to mention anything that anybody else has mentioned. So this is a little on the side, but it is relevant. And this is past complaints against the builder and their home, state of Louisiana, Ascension Parish. So a previous development theirs was called Hill Grove. It was adjacent to a drainage pond called Willow Lake. So everything I'm about to say has actually been published in the advocate, so I would encourage you to go read these articles. So they ran a file against the parish and the neighbors. Basically, a lawsuit was eventually brought to them by the neighborhood HOA against Dan and Bruce and the city. And the issue was centered around the lack of controls for sediment-laid water. So the water was being runoffed to the adjacent Willow Lake, which basically was adjacent to the neighborhood and the back doors of everyone's, everyone's houses. So there was a dramatic flooding and silt buildup and et cetera. So originally, Dan and Bruce had agreed to remedy the drainage, which was actually the responsibility of the city. But Dan and Bruce, to get the approval to build it, agreed to remedy the drainage of that area, which they ended up going into a lawsuit and was settled out of court. Essentially, Dan and Bruce wanted to be excused of the sediment runoff dues, which they were issued infractions and stopped work orders for. So it is my understanding from talking to residents of that neighborhood that a couple of bridges were burned, and they've been looking elsewhere for development. Thank you.
Legislative 3509, Redwood in Magnolia, Ward 5. My problem is about the traffic. I drive the roads. We all drive the roads, and so we know what the ingress and ingress is currently. I haven't read the, the traffic studies. I know where the counter was placed. The counter was placed very far away from the intersection that everybody's talking about where Pabst comes into government. Those issues are real, but there's also going to be construction. There are going to be dump trucks. There's going to be massive infrastructure impacts on Pabst. I'm concerned about that. There is no berm on that road. It is nothing but ditches on both sides that people run into and have to get pulled out frequently. Those issues are real for us. I don't know that anybody has talked about 123 homes and what impact that has with the schools. Do we have the capacity for that? The other issue that we're dealing with right now in Magnolia Valley is we've got construction that's occurring with the individual who sold this property. There are construction trucks, trailers, impeding traffic at the three-way stop at Redwood in Magnolia Valley currently. They've left trailers on two sides of that intersection. It's impeding. You can't see. People weren't around them. So we've already got that problem with the construction that's happening. And if we have more of it, I don't know how people are going to get out in any kind of emergency. You have any kind of emergency on the railroad, how are we going to get out? You have hurricane evacuation, how are we going to get out? There's already a problem. Thank you.
William 107, 3614 Moss Lane, Beverly Place. As everybody probably, probably knows Beverly Place. You see those three parallel blue lines up there? That's our drainage ditches behind our houses. Going on what this other gentleman said about the water drainage, it holds water up there when it rains. And it drains to the sound. I don't care what you put in there in the development. We pension upon, the water's going to go where it's going to go. Okay? That's been proved in Louisiana, there in Baton Rouge, used to Baton Rouge where they did development where it wouldn't, it shouldn't have been there, and it flooded all the houses that were built there before. That's where this development company is from. They're trying to move that over to Ocean Springs here. I don't. We're just going to have problems with the drainage, even during a hurricane. I don't think anybody's really talking about that. They're just talking about this regular drainage. But we, our ditches have filled up more than Katrina just during a big thunderstorm. So, so I myself, I'm against it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, William. All right, this time, if you guys would like to come back up and, we got one more? All right. Can I please keep it to something new?
My name is Sandra Peterson, and I'm in Ward 4, and I live on Government Street just south of Beverly Place. So all these issues with drainage, I'm familiar with that. It comes through our driveway, and it would prevent us from leaving our house. We have a dam there, and it overflows regularly already. My main point that I really want to bring to everybody's attention is the traffic study. I do appreciate the fact that they did that, their efforts, but I'm concerned because they indicated on all of their pages, I think it started at page 106, that the peak hours were from October 9. And so that, I just want to make note, that was in that exact middle of a week-long school holiday.
And the government was shut down too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. All right. No kidding, last one. We're going to go to one more, sorry. I appreciate that.
I'm Jack Pickering. I'm, I live in Ward 4, right on Government Street, actually. What I'd like to do is take us back to what you opened the meeting with, and that was, is this right for Ocean Springs? And I think now what Planning Commission needs to do is think about whether we really want something like that plat layout in our town. We know that we need lower-cost housing. A lot of that was lost when we did some, a lot of upgrades in the main part of town. All the small houses have disappeared. But do we really want something that has the potential, the potential, mind you, of turning into a planned slum? I'm sorry, it's kind of a rude way to say that. I'm not saying that's what they're thinking. But it definitely has the potential of turning into that. So please think about that. I don't think that fits in well with Ocean Springs.
All right, thank you, Jack. All right, before you get started, I would like to ask the attorney, that deed that was handed to you, should we enter that into the minutes?
I request that you would.
Okay, can I get a motion to enter that into the minutes?
Yeah, I'd like a motion to enter the deed into the minutes.
Hang on a second.
Further, I can second.
All right, any seconds. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll get those in the minutes.
As a point of clarification, there's that, for the board attorney, there's no way for me to evaluate the.
Yeah, I understand.
The deed other than what it says.
Okay, well, I understand it.
Thank you for the opportunity. Yes, we feel the same way. If we can be given an opportunity to view what was presented tonight, obviously, all title issues will be straightened up if there are any. We've done a preliminary review title, abstracted title. At this stage, we don't normally do a full, hire an attorney and render an opinion just yet, but clearly, a seller would be responsible for clearing up any title issues. And, you know, as far as I know, there are none, but if this is correct, obviously, that will need to be rectified before we ever close in the primary. On the issue of the, never seen a turnaround, I don't think that is pertinent, whether the gentleman that mentioned the turnarounds and dead ends, Planning Department has told us it meets code, period. Fire Department has reviewed it. They are okay with it. Whether the gentleman prefers to see cul-de-sacs, I don't believe is relevant to our sketch plat approval. What we've submitted, again, this is, should be a common theme, Planning Department says it meets your arguments. We do have a buffer to the issue on not having a buffer to the east, to the National Park. It's clearly no little plat. There is a buffer there, the required buffer. We don't, we do not need Park Service approval, nor in the code doesn't state that we do. Our road right-of-ways are 50 feet, not 36, as stated. This proposal is not max density. I stated earlier, max density is somewhere around 240 units. It was stated a couple of times this evening. In our position, that we have done everything we could to maximize density, that's simply not true. It's not even, it's 17% less than we initially proposed. We have come down to 123 units from 148, 146, I'm sorry. The comprehensive plan comment respectfully is an argument that is more of a rezoning argument. We're not here asking for rezoning. We're simply here proposing a project that meets the current zoning and your code. So if someone has an issue with the comprehensive plan and whether this zoning meets the comprehensive plan, in our opinion, that's more of a zoning argument, not a sketch plat argument. To the point that our homes could be sold to less desirables, well, anyone owns a home in here. Same is true for your home. So not sure the discrimination that's being brought up and why, why our community would be singled out as being sold to less desirables possibly. The comment that it could become a slum is offensive. I have explained how much of investment we're making, whether we own it for 50 years or someone else owns it, or it's individually owned. The fact of the matter is, these will be as well-built as anything in the area. These rents, I have it right here. I was trying not to get into this. Based on our rental rates, our home values will be between $275,000 and $300,000 each. That's a fact. Rentals are not costs for homes for sale. Simple real estate fact. Rentals do not, in and of itself, bring down surrounding home values. But if, it is true. It is true. Let's talk about the demographics of the area. Within one mile, median income is 81,000, just above what it qualifies to rent a home in our community. Medium home value, for sale currently, within a half mile of the property, $250,000, medium value of homes for sale currently. So someone please tell me how my proposed project will hurt home values. Median home value within one mile, let's go out one mile, slightly higher, significantly higher, $300,000. I've told you, based on what we're investing, $275,000 to $300,000 is what these townhomes would be valued at if we were to sell them individually. Within one mile of our property, only 3.8% of rentals are more per month than our proposed value. So we're in the top 5% of all rentals within one mile of our property, hardly a slum developer. Zillow, according to Zillow, there are 31 homes for sale within one mile, 31. 31. That average asking price right now is 277,419. Within one mile. Again, our homes are valued between 275 and 300 should we decide to sell them. Finally, I think I'll, quiet after this. Oh, one more thing. Covenant restrictions will be recorded on property. We do have those. Lettles are not required in the city code. We don't have any jurisdictional lettles. Whether the gentleman disagrees with the current federal law, I respect that opinion, but the fact of the matter is, we cannot and will not break any federal, local laws regarding lettles. The lawsuit that the gentleman mentioned. Eric Pochette is planning director of Ascension Parish and I encourage anyone, you guys, you guys, to call the gentleman. He is a reference I've used many, many times. We're our preferred developer in that parish. I currently have one project for approval in Ascension Parish. I have projects from Texas to Florida. So we have done over 100 communities, developments. I'm confident in saying that. I don't know the exact number, but it's over 100. That's all they can find. That's pretty damn good. And that issue occurred during a, I think it was a 100-year rain event, definitely a 50-year rain event. General contractor, the site was under construction. And the general contractor was responsible for what happened. We addressed it as soon as possible after the rain event. It was corrected. The, some of the neighbors, very few, were obviously against my project and they filed suit against, against us because that was their only remedy. It was settled, as the gentleman said, he's correct about that. Project went on. It proved to be a very successful project and I have a very, very good relationship with the parish of Ascension. I'm not running and looking for other places to develop. I am not. I have, I think, 11 current projects in some form or some stage. So with that, is there any other questions from the Planning Commission?
I've got some. Would it be possible to put like, the developers' cause, a drainage on that south side? Be on the, south of the, those townhomes, between those two?
All that drainage will be addressed before the preliminary.
But I'll say this. Our drainage, our outfall from the detention ponds going north to the canal and pipes. None of our drainage is going south. The site is basically flat, okay? Our, I said earlier, about 1/3 in a heavy rain is going south. 2/3 is going purely to Paps. What we're doing is we're taking all that water, sending it to the detention pond and outfalling north to the big outfall on Paps.
South flows all the time.
This is being done, ma'am, this is being done by instruction of your people at the city.
And then are all those outlets, so you got the outlet on Paps and you got an outlet on Government Street. Is the Paps Road gonna be an ingress, egress outlet constantly?
Yes, ma'am. So our initial submitted was for access on government only. We were requested in meetings with the city to add a second egress point and it was agreed that was the best location for the second egress point.
Yeah, for fire, I understand for fire.
Yes, ma'am.
For fire.
Yes, ma'am. We were totally fine with one, but here we are with two.
Nick, do you have any concerns about the hammerheads for fire?
Uh, without seeing like the size and anything like that, wheel up, you know?
Those are pretty common though, right?
Yeah, you can have cul-de-sac hammerheads.
I have one question if I could.
Uh, for not in public hearing, sorry.
All right, sorry.
All right, are you any questions, Michael?
No.
Okay, Andy, you got any questions?
I've got one more.
No, um, no, I don't. I really don't.
Okay.
Eric Nichols, 305 Beech Hill Road. I'm a lifelong president here, represent the developer.
I do.
Very good.
Very important. Been brought to my attention that the study, the traffic study was done in September 25th, not when school was out.
They were out on vacation. They were out for fall break.
On September 25th?
They most certainly were.
The study, the study may have been dated that date, but the study says in section 3.1, the study was on existing intersections in September 2025. That's what the study says. So I'm not sure anyone can tell how the actual counts. They know, these, these traffic...
Yeah, it's not done over just one day.
They are not, no one's allowed to do traffic counts when school is out.
Understand.
Thank you.
And again, Eric Nichols, 305 Beech Hill Road. I don't have a lot to say. But I did just wanna add that, for one, as far as the deed issue, the only thing that's required at this stage is that the plat is generally described and that the owner has identified, all the title issues will be cleared up preliminary and also final. And also, the big thing here that was kind of discussed in the beginning that, I just wanna emphasize, this is sketch plat. And so we're talking about layout, density, and compliance with the code. Engineering, drainage, construction, traffic, all of that gets taken care of at later stages. So this is the first of three different phases. And this is the first of three different phases. I mean, this may have a lot of public input. And one thing that I can say about these guys, I know they're from out of town. They are from the south at least, it's not New York, so that's, that's good. But what I can say is like, I've worked with them for a good bit of time and they have taken an effort to engage the city, have town halls, and worked with the city to make sure that as input comes in, you know, the density came down. The traffic study, that was not even required at this stage, forget it. And, and again, this is a R1A. It's allowed up to 200 and some odd amount. They brought it down to 124, 123. And so again, tonight, it's just layout, density, and compliance with zoning. And that's why we have zoning, that's why we have codes, why we have the UDC, because it gives us a set standard to follow. They've worked with the city to make sure that they followed every bit of setbacks, density, all of these. And so again, if, if there's a set standard or set of rules that we're to comply with and they've complied with every bit of the rules at this stage right now, that's, that should pass us through this. I mean, that's why we have the rules, that's why they go to compliance. There's not really a lot of subjectivity here. They, they have engaged the city, they've had engaged the public just to, to make this as compliant and, you know, an added benefit to the city. And I do agree with him when he said that it was a bit of an insult to talk about it being a slum in Florida. I mean, I've seen the plans, I know what they're trying to build, I've seen their previous projects and this really would be in addition to the city, so that's all I wanna say.
I haven't closed yet. Yeah, I was deliberating. I wanted them to speak first. The commissioners have anything else? All right, can I, motion to close bubble hearing?
Motion.
All right, got a motion by Michael and a second by Jennifer. All right, so we are now out of public hearing. So this is where the commissioners get to talk to the Planning Department and talk to each other and see what we all think. From my opinion, I heard traffic mostly was the, was the number one issue. Environmental studies, I think, are critical, but once again, we're not there yet at a sketch plat. The deed, obviously, we have to be cleaned up before anything is, is approved for actual building. The individual lots and the covenants and the HOA, once again, we're, we're too early for that, but that's kind of on the developer of how he wants to do it. Let's see. To address, you know, construction workers parking on the street, if they're doing it illegally, call the police. Let them know. Tell them, tell them they can't do that. But I, I drive down that road quite a bit. I completely understand all the traffic issues, 100%. My personal opinion is, I'm gonna say 95% of that is an existing problem that we have on, on Government Street. If we don't even have them there yet, we've still got problems. So...
We've got five times.
And so I understand. So understand that this, this body right here is a recommending panel to the Board of Aldermen. If we really want Government Street fixed and these intersections fixed and we want traffic fixed in that area, we want Paps Road fixed, call your alderman. They're the ones that are gonna be able to do that. Now, I think what we do have an opportunity, and Andy, give me a little guidance here. If we have existing problems in the city or existing issues, is it possible for us to defer, to allow the Board of Aldermen to address that or recommend approval and let it go to the Board of Aldermen, let them make that decision about the existing issues?
Yeah, no, I think, first of all, I think everything you just said was very well stated. I agree with everything. So I mean, my thought on the, the traffic study and, and look, I'm not a traffic engineer and I'm not an engineer on the Planning Commission either, but, uh, my thought is, I mean, it seems to be, it should be focused on their left turn in and the, the traffic generated by their development. I would wonder if the city shouldn't consider, you know, Neil Schaefer has now done this study. We do now have traffic counts. I mean, it could be that the city could parlay and get a, a reduced cost traffic study. Now, that would just have to be some alderman to decide and it's not anything related to this developer. The second part here, or the other way to address your question as far as, you know, what we do with today, I just, to me, you know, I wanna say the cart's not before the horse. I think it's great that they're being so proactive in getting the traffic study to us so early, but honestly, I don't think I've ever seen a traffic study as part of the sketch plat. I usually would see that come in more in the preliminary plat. So I wouldn't necessarily see any reason to hold the sketch plat up on a, a traffic issue, but I think that what you're saying may be more applicable at the preliminary plat phase if it's still just a, you know, if we don't have better answers by then on, you know, one of the residents brought up, you know, can they even build it? Well, I mean, if they can't build it and, and it's warranted and, you know, the city could not allow the project to go through. So, but, I mean, that's a preliminary plat issue there too. So I, I would think that all that just needs to be satisfied before, before construction begins, which is kind of the preliminary plat timeframe.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking. Jennifer, Nick, do you have any opinions?
Yeah, you're, you're kind of, I guess it's for all of y'all, but you're saying what I'm thinking, but I don't know how to put that into actionable words as far as, uh, you know, like approving the sketch plat, but with the constraints of having all these traffic studies done along with that. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to visualize what that looks like on the approval.
I think our responsibility as the commission is, have they met all the rules? Have they met the UDC? Have they done everything they can do for a sketch plat approval? Do they meet all the, all the requirements? I think yes, and I think they've gone above and beyond to meet these sketch plat requirements. I'm not talking about the final approval. I'm not talking about how many units are gonna be there or what it's gonna look like in the end. I'm talking about what they brought us at this point is more than enough for us to say, yes, you have met all the rules, you've done everything you need to do per the city that we have required them to do and they're within the confines of what they want to do. So I think that's our responsibility is to recommend that to the Board of Aldermen. Now, the Board of Aldermen are the approval authority. So when we talk about, is this a change of character to the city? Are we gonna change the character of a neighborhood? That's what your aldermen decide. That's not our purview here to decide what the city's gonna look like. That's the Board of Aldermen.
Can I jump in?
Yeah, go ahead, Andy.
One thing I wanna, I, I like to say, and look, I think you've done a great job tonight. I commend you for, for taking over so well. But, um, the one thing I always like to say to sketch plat is that it's almost like the, the doorway to the developer starting to spend real money, right? I mean, you know, you're usually gonna have a survey, you're usually gonna have some sort of legal, you know, real estate contract. You've got some money to get to sketch plat, but, but after that is when you're gonna start like detailed design, detailed engineering, detailed, you know, all the other studies that come in. Now, again, they're a little ahead of the game than most, but, but I kinda, I always like to say that that's, in my mind, the point of the sketch plat is just, hey, we're not like, you know, if you would have brought a landfill into an R1A, then, then the sketch plat answer is no, right? But, you know, just exactly what you just said, is the use allowed in the current zoning? I agree with you, I believe it is. Are they under the density requirements? Do they have setbacks? I mean, everything that I see on here does seem to comply with the, with the UDC. Now, you know, the, the cul-de-sacs and all that, I'll, I'll look into that too. But again, some, you know, the road layout can change between now and then, Ben being the preliminary plat. So, you know, there's still a thousand hurdles on this project, but, but I'm, you know, I like what you said on the sketch plat as far as the intention and what have they brought us for that particular item.
Thank you, Andy, appreciate it. Okay, um, so like I said, we, we all know Government Street has problems. We know Paps has problems. We know that intersection has problems. Those are all pre-existing problems that we have right now. I encourage you, talk to your alderman about getting them addressed. Talk to us for ideas. We'd be more than happy to meet with you and talk about ideas and what we can do moving forward. But without giving any more of my opinions...
I agree, the job is, is the, is the plat plan, not...
We'll do that at the end. We'll, we'll allow general comments at the very end of this meeting, yes. All right, so do I have a motion? Andy, you can do a motion this time.
I think I was on mute anyway. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking real quick.
Page 41.
Get my packet back on the white page. Yeah, I'll make a motion. I don't get to do those very often anymore, but I would recommend approval of the Holly Grove sketch plat, 123 lot subdivision for townhome dwellings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer, all in, go ahead.
I don't know how to, I wanted to add that...
Caveat on there.
Caveat, I wanted to add that all items discussed related to the current code, UDC code, are addressed in the preliminary.
They have to do that anyways. Yeah, and they have to do it anyways. Yeah. Yeah, I got, I've got a motion by Andy, I've got a second by Jennifer, all in favor? Jennifer? Nick, aye. Michael?
I'll do an aye.
Andy, obviously, aye. And I'll go an aye as well. So unanimous. All right, moving on to general public comment. I'm sorry, that will be at the Board of Aldermen meeting on November 18th. December 2nd, sorry, December 2nd, Board of Aldermen meeting is the next time that will hit us. Remember, we just recommended to the Board of Aldermen, they will make the final decision. All right, so moving into general public comments. At this time, anybody that would like to come up and talk about anything at all, feel free. I know, we'll bring you up first. Once again, try to keep it brief, yes, name and board the microphone. That's the way we can keep it on record.
William Lefferson, 3614 Valley Lane, Beverly Place.
Slip, slip into the mic.
Hello?
Yes.
I think the real issue is here that a lot, some of this kind of transpired with the old administration that with the meeting that was held with the 45 people that showed up at the city center, I think it was, none of us knew anything about this happening. And I think the real issue is, you know, people are kind of upset that this would just sort of come up out of the blue. And everybody's frustrated on, you know, gee, what's the traffic gonna be? What's, what's the drainage gonna be? With all these little other factors that will come later. But just the way that the whole thing was handled is really questionable. I don't know if anybody agrees with that, but...
I got, I got notified, I was one of the 45, I can't speak for everybody else. I got notified by another alderman from my alderment. Can't get aldermen straight, I've been here so long, apparently has it, I can't, I don't know if it's four or five. Another door street, what, what is that?
Yeah, so, so the city has required, what is it?
We did a thousand.
A thousand feet around the edge of the property, any residents there. But we also publish it...
Is it required? Neighborhoods being the developer put on...
And I'll talk about our public notices, cities.
Our public notices is...
Ever knew a public notice was put out? We didn't see it. I got it in my neighborhood where that thing followed line.
Yeah, so, and then also, we also publish it on the website. And we publish it in a newspaper as well?
Yes.
Which newspaper? And we also publish it in the Sun Herald.
Once we tell, like, Jennifer, we have a guy Jennifer, then the signs start to appear. So I'm just saying.
Yeah, so...
You know, that's the frustration I think a lot of people have as far as what's been spoken to.
And I understand that, but the letters and the signs are really only for the people that are right around the property. Other than that, you gotta watch the website and read the newspaper because that's where all the public news notices go out. And they are done 30 days before the meeting. 15 days, sorry, 15 days before meeting. I know, I appreciate it, I really do, thank you. I know, I appreciate it, I really do, thank you. All right, we got...
We've never seen something like this, and what I'd like to say is, at the level of you guys and other planners that have to look at various stages of things, once you start saying yes below, the people up top will say yes. That's simply the way it is in life, in my opinion. So if you guys approve that, you've approved it, the next level basically starts over. And, and for them to say, well, everybody below has approved it, so why is it that? They might say they met all the legal things, but that's got less to do with how the people have to deal with that once it starts.
And I completely understand that. It's, it's not our job to make that touch.
I understand that.
It's our job to say, did this meet the requirements?
So show up at the next meeting?
Absolutely.
To be counsel.
As long as we can notify. If we didn't...
Hi, I, I'm new to all of this.
Name and, name and word.
I'm sorry, Allison Campbell, Ward 5, I live in Magnolia Bayou. But to me, it's the density that is the real concern, and when I purchased the property in Magnolia Bayou, I think my house was built in 94, bought it in 2018, something like that, I assumed that I was in an R1A area. The fact that it's R, or R1 for low-density residential, but how, I mean, this was from 1987 that it was R1A, so I guess my question really is, what power do we have to potentially change this little plot that's in the middle of all these low-density residential areas? Like, could we go back to the drawing board to say, why was it ever made an R1A to allow 200 and something potential places there? Because, I mean, the next developer can come in and not give us 123 potential, and give us 200, but can we go back to the...
200 to try and change that? Like, what would we do as a citizen to make it an R1, not an R1A?
Right, so, the way I understand it, there's, there's potentially three ways to rezone something. One is the owner of the property who requests it to be rezoned. The second is the city comes to the Planning Commission, and then it's the Board of Aldermen who request it to be rezoned because of change in character of the neighborhood or something else, or a Board of Aldermen asks for a change of zoning, and then once again, it still goes through the same process.
Are we too late for that at this stage, having approved this?
You, you likely are, because the zoning is available, so when you purchased your home, you could have gone online and looked at the zoning around you and said, oh, I got an R1A next to me, I don't want to live there, because someone might build an apartment complex there later. So, once again, the city can request a rezone, um, the owner of the property, or your Board of Aldermen.
Okay, because I did look at the maps that the Ocean Springs City provided, and it seems to me, in my, you know, residential knowledge, that that area was low-density residential, so I don't, I mean, I guess...
Yeah, it, it does, it comes up often where somebody buys a property and it's across the street from them, it's commercial, and it wasn't developed at the time, and then they build a store right across from their home, and they're like, well, you're ruining my neighborhood, well, no, it was commercial before, they have the right to build a...
I guess it just seems like it's not compatible with what I read about the Ocean Springs city development plans, that it should be...
So the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, like, it doesn't seem to be congruent with what that is, so, I guess that's just my question, so, it doesn't, I think the problem is that it's that simple.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, that's, I think, and I'm the resident pedestrian of our neighborhood, I walk all the time, and I'm scared to death that I'm going to get killed by some cars coming through.
Well, they're going to put up some nice sidewalks if they do it, if they get approval.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've thought that they did cut down the homes, they put some sidewalks in, but I still think that it's so many places on that little block.
We, we understand.
Community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My name's Jack McDavid, I live at 100 North Street in Ocean Springs, in Woodhaven Subdivision, and, uh, it's been like a family home since my parents moved in there in 79, when we graduated high school here and all that, gone a good bit of that time, and been back the last 16, 18 years, and, uh, graduated from Ocean Springs High School and USM, and I'm tired now, living on that address, and I guess it helps to have been there a lot, to be able to reflect on something, and that is on the east side of Government Street, running from the grade school up to Path Road. When we moved in, that was all pine trees, nice thick pine trees between us and the railroad tracks, right?
Well, times have to change, all right? Decades have gone by, half a century's gone by, all right, so you'd be, you'd be a real selfish guy to say, I wish they'd have left all of that pine trees, right? So people moved into that subdivision, they moved into another one, and I can't remember how long Beverly Place has been there, is it 20 years?
Ninety-five.
How much?
Ninety-five.
Ooh, years.
I would just say, though, in fairness to the growth of development, Ocean Springs is being fair about housing, from my perspective, on the other side of Government Street, looking at that side, I think the city's been very fair, because, you know, I don't know how many subdivisions I'm talking about, from the grade school up to, up to Beverly Place, where it cuts off at the Little Baptist, Woodhaven Baptist Church. In short, I would submit that that's enough. I mean, trying to squeeze in another one between Woodhaven Baptist and the railroad tracks, to me seems, as the military movies entitle some of you guys, like in military history, Bridge Too Far, I mean, is one too many, to try to squeeze one more in there as far as the impact of the quality of life, and then wiping out that last stand of trees in the area, you know, the urge are in, the squirrels get to use, and I'm, I'm not a tree hugger or anything like that, but I like a little balance in life, so that's going to get whacked, and then we're going to have nothing. My house still brooms, trash receptacle, but it's space for me to look at, you know, it's just, it's an eyesore. It's going to be an absolute eyesore.
Hey, can I jump in real quick?
Yeah, go ahead, Andy.
Uh, I think we're definitely talking about agenda items, um, I think this is not necessarily good for anybody, because all these comments are going to be in the minutes, they're not going to be reflected in what was discussed on this property, I think if there's additional conversation on this item, it should be handled at the Board meeting.
Okay, that's a good point. So everything we're saying in this open forum is not an agenda item, and won't go forward to the Board of Aldermen or anything else, so if you want to talk more about something we've already talked about tonight, I would do it at the Board of Aldermen meeting. Uh, if you want to talk about anything else that we haven't talked about tonight, more than welcome to come up and speak.
The only reason I mention that was I didn't feel like that part of it got hit on, you hear people down near the grade school about their issues, which I can...
Yeah, but we're, we're still talking about this specific property, so, if you want to say trees in general, we need to protect trees or something, that's great, but, uh...
No, I just, I just, I just meant the overall, the overall living experience.
I'm just being clear, I don't mean to interrupt what you're stating, I'm just saying that it's not being, it's not being tied to the property until we go back, you know, now that the item's been closed.
I don't know how to get around this comment, because if we're going to close it, we're going to close it, but this is my knowledge from Blackman. When they cleared that property, that property permit for clearing was for a single-family home. So something changed between the permit for the clearing and where we are now, so the people who say we don't know or actually did some research, but if I did, had been misled.
We can look into that.
I'm Ernie Pettis, I live at 3300 Government Street, um, about midway between the intersection and Magnolia Elementary, on the corner of Pine, Villas, and Government. I mainly have a question, when did the notices go out for the first meeting? I did not know about that first meeting.
This is the first meeting for the city. So the developer had his own meeting before this, but that had nothing to do with the city. This is the first city meeting discussing this topic.
So, the city wasn't required to notify some of the other facilities?
There were no other ones, this is the very first city meeting, yeah, this is the very first city meeting.
Yes, the city wasn't, we weren't at the neighborhood meeting that the developer did, we're residents, only us city staff were not at that meeting. That was ours. Okay, you won.
Even Greg Dionne, I guess I'm more, I really, but I live on Terra Lane in Beverly Place. My house backs up to Woodside, and we don't have concrete ditch, so my question is, you asked, you said, come to us and talk to us about ideas, how do I do that? When do I have the opportunity? Is it through emails, or are we going to have another, more...
You're talking about existing drainage as you have now.
Correct. Issues that are affected because they've come to light about this property being developed. The roads have been there for a long time, the traffic issue is, they put that crosswalk with the light right in front of my street, you may, you may know about that, okay? There's a reason they did that. I don't know if it's impacted now with this study, with this traffic study, but that needs to be somehow brought into the mix of ideas that we have, okay, so what is my, what's the answer? Is this the time to do these things? Was there going to be another opportunity for me to be more articulate, talk about things that my brain wants to add to ideas we're talking about, like create maybe four lanes from the school all the way to hand?
That would be the Board of Aldermen meeting.
Okay.
That's the, that's the perfect place to do it.
That's the best place to bring those things up.
Yeah, so if you're, if you're having issues with the current drainage on your property or outside your property, then that would be Public Works, you could email the Planning Department, um, or your Board of Aldermen, um, but just reach out to the city and say, hey, I got an issue with this, and they will address it as needed.
Right, I'm not here to win public favor, what I want to do, though, is make it better for the next generation.
And we appreciate that.
And I understand growth has to happen.
Yes, we appreciate that.
This city has put itself in a bind with this project, and something needs to be addressed in a very five-year, 10-year, whatever, and if this is the way to get more money out of this, you know, they're, they're willing to throw a $30 million number out there like that, I'd like to know what their passion is about helping this city out. I've heard them talk about making it a nice, for the little neighborhood.
I, I would say, reach out to the developer and ask them yourself, yeah.
Okay, I, see, these are, these are just storyboard questions.
No, I, I'm, I'm with you.
Right.
I'm with you. I'm willing to have that conversation, absolutely.
So what do we do, just at the DOA?
At the Board of Aldermen meeting, on, what was it, 2 September, or 2 December?
December 2nd.
December 2nd.
I'm going to change my, my travel plan.
Yep, December 2nd.
The next meeting they do have is November 18, but this particular case will be on December 2nd. They have meeting for that, or research meeting, November 18. And you can always reach out to your Alderman.
Yeah.
Always.
Who am I, Alderman?
That would be Rocklot.
I'm a former civic minded, I've been a federal employee for many, too many years, so I, I willingly can and...
The maps, the maps of the wards are on the website.
Yeah.
Yeah, come on, Andy.
I just wanted to say the exact same thing, as I was walking out of the car, Lisa Greenberg, and I live at 11050 Street, and it used to be Ward 4, I think we've been registered to 5, or vice versa, anyway, the point is, just what he said, the roads, Path Road and Government Street is not this developer's problem, it's Ocean Springs' problem. And I'm like you, I think if this city sees this as increasing its tax base, or whatever it is that this development would bring to Ocean Springs, then the city needs to step up and address problems that are clearly there, and I'm kind of like what you just said, if this turns out to be a platform to talk to the city about issues that everybody clearly has, I mean, it's not one or two people, you know, Long Springs, everybody has that issue on Woods House and Government Street. So, like you said, maybe this is, is it, is it, do we hit the mayor, do we hit...
Well, this is, this is a great place to start that conversation, existing problems already in Ocean Springs to start that conversation here, and we can steer you to your Board of Aldermen, call the Planning Department, we got Public Works, you can send an email in and say, look, we've had enough...
What?
Yeah, we, we've been dealing this, with, for this for five years, do we have a plan? And if the, the answer is no, we don't have a plan, then the citizens can say, Ocean Springs, we'd like you to start, we'd like you to make a plan.
Okay, will do, thanks.
When you mentioned that the city can sit here and listen, who is that?
So, are you talking about a decision-making authority? That's your Board of Aldermen.
I wish you'd have remembered the whole premise of the, how it worked into the information sharing, but it was about bringing the city leadership into hearing before the final decision was made. When does that, it seemed like that was happening at a mid-level and not the last level.
Yeah, so, just to give you an example, and, does anybody else want to speak before?
I do.
All right, come on up, sir, we'll, we'll talk about this after.
Want me to wait?
If you want to.
Okay. Hello, hi, um, I happened to take a very fortuitous night to ask my questions, I just wanted to know, first of all, Waller, Ward 1, actual Waller, Ward 1, um, I just wanted to know about the comprehensive plan, what the status of it was.
I'm sorry, I missed it. Gentlemen, can you take it a couple steps out? Thank you.
Okay, the status of the comprehensive plan, what, what's happening with it, I know it was kind of bounced to the Board of Aldermen, and then we had a draft, and there was no draft, and then...
So we're, the old comprehensive plan, not that new draft one that came through a couple of months ago, half a year ago, that is still the comprehensive plan for Ocean Springs, correct, right?
2010 comprehensive.
Yeah, 2010 comprehensive plan.
Okay.
The other one has pretty much been shelved, and I think the Board of Aldermen are going to ask us to update the 2010 one, but I, don't quote me on that, but I think that might be what they're thinking.
Okay, that, well, that was my question, because I know that...
Well, we are going off the 2010 one.
We had a draft, the draft needed to be fixed, then the organization got booted and all of that, so...
Yeah.
All right, and then the next question I have is about short-term rentals.
Okay.
Um, I know we, there was a discussion about maybe having a meeting of some sort and trying to resolve, you know, some of the issues around it, and so, two questions, actually, we're, I guess we're not on a short-term, short-term moratorium, but the second is, is I know with the discussions that were supposed to happen, are we still having those discussions? Have those discussions been had?
So I think we've, we've kind of gone through this, and we, we're not taking any new applications.
No, the moratorium's still in effect, we're not accepting any new applications currently, while the moratorium's still in effect.
Oh, these were free to...
Yes, ma'am, so what we're working on right now are people who have been on that waiting list, um, that waiting list has since been frozen, and no one's been added to that waiting list, so that's why you see cases on the agenda, that's once it's already been in the works, uh, they're getting through their inspections, um, but as far as the conversations for changing the short-term rentals, I have not had any of those conversations just yet, um, I believe you can hear something say, the Alderman or the committee, I don't know, she's got it, but more work is still in effect, or anything new.
Well, and I was going to ask my Alderman, but then I was like, well, no, let me start here first, and then, now I know how to go to my Alderman, so...
Yeah, feel free to reach out to my office, and I can associate with anything. All right, cool.
Yeah, let me, Amanda, you may have mentioned it earlier, when I was not there for the first two items, but, um, would that take account to, um, as far as the number of spots we have open and the number of slots filled?
So, um...
Yeah, I don't even know if they got passed, but assuming, whichever one's passed today, where was...
Right, so I still, um, have, for the density zone, I've got nine, um, on the waiting list, um, there's two pending at the moment, and I've got, um, 17 on the citywide, so I still have a waiting list, um, that was already frozen from before, so we still have a due on that waiting list, um, and then in, let me see, on the agenda earlier, in the, um, have you heard those two, first two meetings, Andy? Um, for the citywide, um, the agenda topics tonight, one of them was 53 out of 60 permits, and the next one was 54 out of 60 permits, so, that's from citywide, but I still have a couple more slots, we do have a few more, um, folks going through the inspections and application process, so we should have some more coming up on the agenda, but like I said, those are already ones that's been on that waiting list for a while.
And is the, and the waiting list is just kind of backfilling permits that were not renewed, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Does that answer your question, Andrew?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, any new, any more new topics?
One, one thing. I'm Scott Hawkins, I'm in Ward 5, Magnolia Bayou 2, but just kind of interested in the whole process and listening, um, I think what, something that is, is bothering me,